Okay, good evening Altadena's and good evening council members. I'd like to welcome you to the Altadena Town Council April 16, 2019 meeting. So the meeting is hereby called to order and the time is 7:03 Tuesday, April 16, 2019. The pledge of allegiance for tonight, I will turn it over to council member Jennifer Lee.
Good evening. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be said by Franklin Elementary School students. Franklin Elementary School students will be led by Principal Stewart and Franklin Elementary is here in Altadena. They are a school that is transitioning into becoming a computer science immersion school that will offer coding from grades TK through 5th. There's also a special open enrollment period for parents interested in enrolling in the program. So I've been to the school, it's absolutely wonderful and please welcome Franklin Elementary School students.
Our students are made way to pay. Please, we're in the pledge of allegiance, this is what we do at our school. Franklin.
Lots is.
But to write him over here, heart, ready, be good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with righteous hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One, two, three. My country is a free, sweet land of liberty, of the I.S.C. Land where my fathers died, land of their children's pride. From every mountain side, that freedom brings.
Let's give it up. Thank you so much, everyone from Franklin Elementary School. Let's give them another round of applause. And we also want to thank the parents. Without the parents, the students, the children wouldn't be here. So we want to thank you for taking the time to come tonight and definitely feel free to stay and observe the walk-ins of the Altadena Town Council if that works to your schedule. Again, thank you. Item number 1.2, that would be roll call and that'll be council member Jones.
Good evening, community. Good evening, council members. Please respond after I call your name. Okuri Izimi?
Present.
Patricia Sutherland?
Here.
Jennifer Lee?
She's here, she went to go get the can.
Dorothy Wong?
Here.
Jeff Simmons?
Here.
Victoria Knapp?
Present.
Billy Malone?
Present.
Erin Cheetah?
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas?
Present.
Gloria Sanica?
Here.
Antonio Becerra?
Present.
Justin Robertson?
Here.
Regina Wilkins?
Present.
Sylvia Vega?
Here.
Diane Marcusson?
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Everybody's here, yay! The game's all here.
Thank you so much, all council members. It definitely is an honor for all of us to be present here tonight. Okay, item number 1.3, that will be council member Sutherland for the approval of the April 16 meeting agenda.
Thank you. The executive committee met last week on April the 8th and approved the agenda as presented. Copies of which are on the piano if any of you did not pick up one on the way in. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented? Yes, Dorothy?
May I add a census tract report, 460301.
That'll be 8.2. Anything else? Okay, in that case, I move that the amend be except approved as amended.
Okay, the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 8.2 for census tract 4603.01 has been properly moved and motion and seconded. So all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that will be the order for tonight.
Oh, you know what, I think I need to abstain, I wasn't here last month, so I would stick...
I started the agenda.
I'm sorry. I'm multitasking.
Okay, the next item will be item number 2.1 and that will be the chairman's report. I'd like to thank the community for coming and certainly we appreciate it, council member Lee arranging Franklin Elementary School to lead the council in the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to also remind us that power is really with the people. Leaders have no more power than the people give them and I believe that it takes the community, it takes the people to keep the leaders moving in the direction of the people because we are a democracy is the government of the people for the people by the people. So you have all the power and I also believe that my personal agenda will never override that of the community. So we are your servant. I actually picked up a saying at the 10th Annual Congressional Women of the Year Ceremony on Saturday. Someone said that if you like where you live, you must volunteer. So we volunteer and we volunteer and that's what gets things moving. I know that down the line on the agenda, we'll be asking you to volunteer because the next election is coming up. So it takes everybody to come together for Altadena to move the way that we want our community to move if we love our community and I believe that we all do. I attended something that was very interesting and very eye-opening for me and I'm sure other people that attended will attest to that. I went to the RoboRally 19, RoboRally 2019 that was sponsored by PAF, Pasadena Education Foundation and Honda. It was held at the Rose Bowl and it was amazing to see these eight-year-olds to maybe somewhere around 13 building amazing technology and competing. So that's what your school district, Pasadena Unified School District is also sponsoring. So we do have good public education in Altadena, Pasadena, Sierra Madre because we are under the Pasadena Unified School District. Okay, that will conclude my report and I thank you for listening. Moving on to item number 2.2 and that will be the vice chairman's report, council member Sutherland.
Very briefly, as indicated on the agenda tonight, public comment will appear after the Altadena community reports. If you would like to make public comment on any topic, the cards are on the piano. If you would like to speak, we'd ask you to fill one out and turn it in to one of the council members at either end of the table here and we will call on you at the appropriate time, at which point you can come up to the podium, make your statement, maximum of two minutes and if you would like a response later from one of your council members, be sure that your information, telephone number, email address, whatever is on the card so that we can then contact you afterwards and that's it.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number 2.3, that'll be recorded secretary's report, council member Jones.
The minutes of March 19, 2019 were emailed to all council members with a request that any additions or corrections to be emailed back. All corrections have been incorporated into the final minutes and if I hear no more tonight, I make a motion that the minutes of March 19, 2019 be approved to in final form and placed on the town council webpage.
Second motion.
Okay, you have heard the motion regarding the minutes for March 19, 2019, properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That was... All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposing? Any abstention? Okay, so we have five... Okay. All right. Okay, thank you so much.
Gloria.
Are we okay? Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 2.4, that will be the treasurer's report and council member Lee.
Good evening. Our balance as of the end of March is $2,172.97. We are a volunteer organization. Here is the can that we pass around. Please donate so we may continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, council member Lee. Correspondent's secretary's report, council member Wong.
Thank you very much. I would just like to let everyone know that our great friends here at Pasadena Media now have our town council meetings on YouTube. So they are posted on our current town council website under the Altadena Town Council and anyway, they are all the way back to January 2017. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for that report. The Pasadena Media, we really appreciate you doing that and we are forever grateful to our supervisor also because without our supervisor, this wouldn't be, it wouldn't be possible. So Supervisor Berger, we thank you for continuing to support the Altadena Town Council and Okay, item number 3.1, that will be the California Highway Patrol and do we...
Officer Norton is not here tonight. I have, I left it home and the information that she gave to me. Officer Norton has been unfortunately very busy the last couple of days going to fallen officer funerals. She said that it's very difficult, of course, when there are people that you've known and worked with. So she was not able to come up with the stats that we usually will have at the meeting. So she will be here next month.
Okay, thank you for that update and then council member Marcusson.
Sorry, I was gonna talk to her about this in the meeting tonight, but I did want, I guess, all of you to know, we have the big project on New York Drive. We have had some, we've had some crash-ups in the last three weeks. We've had two cars, parked cars total and a guy on a motorcycle hit on New York between Allen and...
Please to the mic, please.
It's not on.
Now, you can't hear it, nobody can hear it, we need to hear you in the recording. You can hear the recording.
It's on, it's on. It's on.
It's up to you, just letting you know.
Okay, well, okay, so we've had two parked cars hit and totaled and a guy on a motorcycle hit and crashed. And I've asked the CHP to please look into some sort of a plan for, it's between Allen and Lake or really pretty much Allen and Hill, but I guess the other one was past Hill. So anyway, I just wanted to let everybody know if they'd heard about those crash-ups. I was gonna ask her what, how far she'd gotten with it, but she is working on it for me and I'm also working with Officer Cooper. So if anybody's heard about those, we're not meaning them go unaddressed, we're talking about them.
Okay, thank you. She didn't say to me that, yes, she was working on that.
Okay, thank you for that update. So govern yourselves accordingly as you travel around New York Drive because of the construction that is going on there and it will be there, it will be ongoing for quite some time, so please be safe. The next item, item number 3.2 and that will be the Altadena Sherry Station and that'll be Lieutenant Alice Conchola.
Yes, good evening, good evening, everyone. So as far as the, our crime rate, again, I'm pleased to, as in the past, report that our crime rate is down. One of the things I will tell you about crime statistics and things such as that and that is if it's down, but if you're that one victim, it's one victim too many. So we take all of our statistics very seriously and analyze those. But one of the things that we're still seeing an increase in, it's been reported in the past and that is our assaults. And of those assaults though, it's the relationship based, all but one of our results that we had to report for this month, there was some type of relationship, whether it was an acquaintance, it was a relative and we look at that to see how do we deter that crime and we look out to, we look out to our community groups and ask within your own groups to continue to preach values and respect towards others because that's where it's very difficult. If we had some type of situation in which it was gang-related, which it's not, or some type of a group that we could really address, we'd be able to address that from a law enforcement position, but we, it's very difficult at this point. Also in the past, the increase in vehicle burglaries and we took a look a little bit closer and I know that in the past, it's been reported, lock your doors, hide your valuables and from March, and to illustrate the importance of hiding those articles in the vehicle, from March 1st to, I'm sorry, excuse me, January 1st to March 30th, we had a total of 48 thefts from vehicles. Of those, 23 of those vehicles, the windows were smashed. The 25, the vehicles were unlocked. We had maybe, I believe it was five vandalisms where a window was broken. So what that told us is that of those, those windows that were shattered and articles were stolen from them, people were leaving their articles in plain sight. Those articles, those property were duffel bags, as reported, purses, backpacks, items were stolen, were those small items such as electronic items, cash, jewelry. So we cannot continue to stress enough to hide those items from those criminals that are looking for a crime of opportunity, something easy to do. As far as those vehicles that were left unlocked, granted that they don't have to pay for a smashed window, which, and I'm not making light of that, but again, I cannot stress enough, of the, of some of our residential burglars in the way of prevention, we're still looking at any patterns that we've had. The only possible pattern we've had is window smashes from sliding glass doors, back windows of the rear of the homes and what that tells us is that they're making a lot of noise when they smash these windows. So in the way of prevention, we could, we could recommend a number of different security measures, alarms, things such as that, but I can't stress enough of community getting together, knowing your neighbors, communicating with your neighbors when you're gonna be away from your home because they're making enough noise to call 911, to call us out and that would be very helpful for us to pinpoint those because across Altadena, we can't pinpoint one certain area that is, we'll just say target-rich and which they're focusing on one particular area within Altadena. So again, I can't stress the importances of community and as you said, Chairman Izimi, is that correct? Okay. Volunteering, we have one of the largest volunteer programs and reserve programs at Altadena Station and we just recognized our volunteers this past week, so I can't stress enough being that volunteer even at the Altadena Station. Lastly, what I'd like to try to do in my next presentations as I am fortunate enough to come here to give presentations is to introduce one of our deputies or as many deputies I can as I'm coming here. Now, the deputy I'm about to introduce probably needs no introduction, but that's Deputy Dan Page and Dan Page, you may know him by name because he is our social media contact, but I wanted to, for those of you who do know him, for those of you who don't know him, I wanted to match a name with a face and he is our go-to guy, our community relations person and he's part of the team that you'll, you'll get to know if you don't know him already, which I understand you do. Any questions? Yes?
Okay, council member Knapp?
Good evening, thanks so much for coming. I have a question with regard to vehicle burglaries.
Yes.
What is the recommendation? I know that there has been that if the back seats have a latch that make them fold down and there's a back quarter panel window, that those are being smashed so that the back seat can be dropped so they can get into the contents of the trunk. So is there any way around that? I mean, I know that there is supposedly smash-proof tint you can buy particularly for those windows and I have heard that people are leaving the seats down so that you can see in that there's nothing back there to smash the window for, but is there any other, I mean, that, it's a, it's a particular problem on Tesla Model 3s because there is that window and the, you can see the latch right there and you can just open the latch and get right into the backseat if you, in the back, I'm sorry, into the trunk if you want to.
I am personally unaware over the number of years that I've been presenting, providing presentations and learning of different techniques and methods of operation with these criminals of a specific lock. Now, I'm not saying there isn't one out there or to lock those back hatches, but I would have to, I'll have to, I'll research that and maybe get back to you as quick as I can because I'm unaware of any type of latch. Dan, okay, so, but, but the technique of folding the seat down so Brian and I can see that there's nothing in there is very similar to some of the recommendations we've left in the past by leaving your ashtray open because some people just break the window to still simple change or any other compartments. In fact, for people that might even be in this room that own any type of a vehicle with a locking container with, that they would, like mortician construction, when they end for the day, they leave those hatches, they unlock them, leave them open because they have their power tools, they remove their power tools and that's just a way of showing those criminals, don't break open the lock because there's nothing in here. It's a common technique that probably does deter some break-ins.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Catalytic converters.
Catalytic converters, okay. We've had over the last maybe six months or so, an increase in those catalytic converters. Now, as I mentioned earlier about the statistics, our catalytic converter thefts went down from the last month, we only had, and I hate saying this, we only had five, we only had five, but that's five too many and one too many. And of the catalytic converters, in fact, our, some of our investigators are scheduling to meet with some of the, in particular, the Toyota manufacturers because the Toyota Priuses have been kind of one of the bigger targets and we're trying to set up a meeting with them so that we can find out how, how are they doing this? We have a pretty good idea that they're using cordless, cordless power tools, I won't get too specific, but we're trying to figure out how are they doing it so quickly? Now, what we have found with those catalytic converters, when it comes to the times that the thefts were reported, and we're not 100% sure on this, but we're, so we're really trying to, trying to narrow us down, but we believe that these thieves are coming in within a 20, 24-hour period of time and, you know, targeting vehicles and then leaving because this last time, we had them within a two-day period of time and then nothing at all. So we're trying to see if there's a pattern with some of these thieves, we're reaching out to the Toyota manufacturers and scheduling a meeting soon to see if we can do that because it is, it is, it is a problem and one of the intriguing things that we have is those types of vehicles, those Toyota Priuses are so low to the ground, the clearance and it's difficult unless it's a very thin person trying to slide underneath there and not making a significant amount of noise. So we are looking to see how are they doing it? How fast can someone steal those because, and if there's any, any targeted vehicles, it would be that Toyota Prius. With that being said, I can't stress whether it's during the daytime, yes, daytime, or even the evening, try to park any of your vehicles in a well-lit area and area where it's not isolated because I'm not one of those people that has one of those cars where I had to park way out in the parking lot so no one scratches it and you can scratch mine all day long. But if you do that, understand that the more isolated it is, if you make loud noises, people might tend to see that as a target. But I'm gonna try, we're gonna be working and hopefully I'll have a better report on the way of the catalytic converters to provide information to you, for you that might be a possible target and how to, how to secure and maintain your vehicle in a safe manner so that they don't steal them. So I'll do my best to come back with a report, a little bit more thorough report on those.
Okay. All right, council member Malone?
Yes.
In relation to that, that happened to me twice and it was with a Toyota Forerunner, which was easy to get in and out. The first time I replaced it exactly the same and I had it welded on, but the second time they cut the welds off. After that, I went to the muffler shop and said, I want aftermarket part, whatever it, whatever you wanna do. And then I never had the issue again because it was a non-Toyota part on the car. I don't know if that makes a difference, but they seem to know that that was a cheaper part with less stuff they could get out of it.
Okay, so...
It may be coincidence that they never came back, but I have a feeling that they know when you get something new, they're gonna come back and get it. So it helped.
And I'm, thank you for sharing that information because that's one of those questions we'll ask specifically, how are they targeting these vehicles and what we can do to share the information with the community to safeguard. So we'll, I appreciate that.
You don't want to go aftermarket, but if it prevents more theft, it's, yeah.
I agree, I agree 100% because in, to be quite honest with you, and I don't have to say this, but I'll say it to you, it's the hard-working folks that, whether you're, you can afford it or not, that are being victimized. It's, it's the ones that are struggling, we're struggling to pay those payments and that inconvenience and losing time for work. So we're really victimizing our own for those that, if those criminals are within Altadena, we're victimizing our own and for good, hard-working people that can't afford those things so, or make it difficult. So we're hoping, hoping to share those, again, the respect and the values.
Okay. All right, any other question from council? All right, just one comment. We, Altadena is still having some challenges with parking and I want to thank you for moving as fast as you can when we reported that to you. I also want to thank Captain Wong, CHP. There was a specific area where neighbors were just parking everywhere and they're leaving it there and... leaving it there, and they're supposed to move their car over a 72-hour period. And their movement was, I moved the car an inch. So we really want to be good neighbors, and respect, just, you know, try to follow the law, but at the same time, be respectful to neighbors. We want to live together in peace. So I do thank you for sending more deputies out there, and also Captain Vong for sending officers. So the latest report is that the neighbors are now complying and being neighborly. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on to item number 3.3, county fire. Ms. Kraken.
So, good evening, Altadena Town Council. I'm Anderson Mackey. I'm your Assistant Fire Chief for the local area. And I'd like to present to you the activity report for Altadena for the month of March. So we had a total of 323 calls for March, nine fires, 278 medical calls, four service calls, 11 hazardous condition calls, and 21 good intent calls. We had a total of 278 patients that were seen, once again. 89 patients were transported via ALS ambulance, and 132 were transported by BLS. I've got an update for you also here. In your, in our report there, there's been a change there. We, the update for property loss is 62,000. The update for contents is 38,500. Okay, you can, once again, you see we had a total of nine fire incidents. And our hazardous condition calls, you can see there. Most of those were power lines down. So a lot of times, those are due to the wind, obviously. Luckily, no fires were started behind those, so we're happy about that. Traffic collisions, we had a total of 21 traffic collisions. And, oh, let's start year-to-date totals. We'll get that to you next month. That concludes the report. Do I have any questions at all?
Any questions from council for the fire department? Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Altadena Community Report, 4.1, Altadena Library.
That's not Cindy.
I know.
Good evening, Town Council members. I'm obviously not Cindy. My name is Terry Andrews, and I'm the President of the Altadena Library Board of Trustees in here to fill in for Cindy tonight. And it's a busy month for the Altadena Library. Earlier this month, we had National Library Week, and there have been a lot of programs that we've been trying to get off the ground locally, that we want folks to know about. Chloe Cavalier, who asked me to do this presentation, wanted me to start with the Town Council members themselves, and make sure that all of you have your library cards, and you've been taking a book every now and then, or a CD, and taking a look at some of the historical exhibits that we have going at the library right now. It's a pretty busy time. Some of the routine things are that we're going to have our library board meeting on the 22nd Monday at 5:00. We also, after that, will probably have a special meeting in which we review the Policies and Procedures Manual, which is a redo of the Altadena Library bylaws, which we for a long do for an overhaul. So those of you that love policy and procedure, you're welcome to join that meeting when it's announced, probably going to be on April 29th. And then, a big thing for us is that we're approaching the kickoff of our summer reading program, that will kick off on June 1st. But we want to do a lot of advance talking about that. As you look back in the records of the Altadena Library, the county system was started in 1912, and Altadena was one of the very first libraries to be established. And it was in a grammar school, and then expanded to a couple of grammar schools. And later on, when Altadena became a special district with a vote of the citizens, we continued to house our library collection in grammar schools. So we've got a long history of serving children in the community, and this is yet another opportunity for them to get involved in our reading programs. Earlier this year, we had 1K Before K, which was a program designed to get 1,000 books read collaboratively with parents and kids before kindergarten. And now we've got this new summer reading program, and it's entitled, "A Universe of Stories." And it's in honor of the 60th anniversary of NASA, and the 50th anniversary of the man landing on the moon. Also, there's a, you know, on a more routine basis, we've got the Friends of the Library Book Sale coming up in May, May 18th from 10 to 4, and May 19th from 1 to 4 at the library. The Friends of the Library have been a hard-working, long-serving group for the Altadena Library. They've been around now since 1959, which makes them 60 years old this year. And they've been consistent supplier or donator of money and much-needed funds to keep the library going. So it'll be a special book sale for them. And conflicting with that, just a little bit, is going to be on the same day, the 18th, a special poster signing by a local artist named Leah Connect, who was chosen by LA Metro to furnish a poster for Altadena. And sort of a continuum of posters that have been made for cities along major transportation routes all over the LA metro area. So it's a big deal, and it's going to be something that will be very special. I'm not sure exactly where these posters will be, or this particular one will be exhibited after it's signed. I think it'll be at the library for a while, then moves on, but that will be something worth going to. So, busy time for the library, and are there any questions about us?
Any questions from council?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Item number 4.2, that'll be Collaborate Pasadena, Councilmember Sanika.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying something a little bit different starting this month. I'm going to give you a copy of the report, and then I'm just going to talk about the, you know, kind of the highlight things that we were talking about, and if you have any other questions, you can ask me about them later. And you'll have the total evening in your position. So the Collaborate Pasadena Leadership Council meeting was held at Pacific Oaks College on March 27th at 6:00 PM. This wasn't an agenda item, but it was announced that Meredith Miller would be resigning from the council due to other commitments taking precedence. So we are looking, Meredith was my counterpart here in Altadena, and so we're looking for a replacement person from the Altadena business community to take her place. So if there's someone from the Altadena business community that's interested, I'm requesting that you please contact the Town Council Executive Committee and express your interest. There was a follow-up discussion regarding the City of Learning. We discussed the Leadership Council youth application. We're trying to get more youth involved in the Collaborate Pasadena, so we want to offer the youth a unit of credit for their participation on the Leadership Council. We had youth before, but they graduated and they've moved on. And so we were trying to come up with some ideas to encourage and entice, I guess, the youth to participate on the council. We discussed the Cal Schools Parents Survey Outreach Flyer. And basically, the purpose of the Cal Schools Parents Survey was to try to increase attendance at the schools and to get parents engaged. And it's a survey that sort of like gets, gives the parents a feel of how safe and how welcoming the school environment is. And so it was, they were trying to make it a little bit more user-friendly. We also discussed, where the Leadership Council presented the Pasadena CHIP, that's the Community Health Improvement Plan, as a model for the Collaborate Pasadena, and we're still talking about that. It was explained that the Community Health Improvement Plan was a community-wide statement of priorities and goals for improving the community health, and the CHIP is a product of rigorous participatory planning process that included significant involvement from a wide range of community stakeholders. And we were talking about adopting that as part of the Collaborate Pasadena plan, but that's still being discussed. The Pacific Oaks, Pacific Oaks College is looking to provide work-study students to community partners, and they're looking for robust and equitable processes for identifying partners in the long run. So this work-study is basically directed to students who are enrolled in Pacific Oaks College, but they can go into the community and volunteer, or work in community, and part of their financial aid would go into work-study. So they would like be getting paid a paycheck. It works like when you get work, when you get financial aid, you get a grant, you get a loan. You can put your loan in work-study, and then work in the community, and you won't have to pay your loan back, basically. Okay? So that's something that they're looking into starting. And then there was announcement of the next month's meeting, and then the director adjourned the meeting at about 7:00.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Malone.
I'd just like to make a comment when you were saying that you are now going to be looking for another business partner, volunteer for the...
Yeah, we need someone.
Tomorrow morning, Doug Cauliflow is going to be announcing a report from the chamber shortly, but I'm just going to say, there is a meeting with the chamber and many of its members tomorrow morning for breakfast. If you have something available, make sure that it's put out at the registration table. Another thing is to get it in the chamber newsletter, that goes out to all the businesses in the area, and also to the chamber meeting. If any of those you can come to, or you can give us information, we can make sure it gets in the hands of those people, and maybe somebody can contact you from that.
Okay. Now, wouldn't that have to go through the executive committee? Because they're representing, they would be a representative.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how that would...
Now, Collaborate Pasadena is not a subcommittee of the ATC. And if you're looking for a business partner, then you're looking for a business partner from the community, so it doesn't really have anything to do with the ATC. But I would recommend maybe going through the chamber, so you do have some veto.
Okay. I just wasn't sure how that worked.
Okay. When Collaborate Pasadena came into existence, it was Councilmember Hubdi that was, led it that. They did, as the Town Council, for a representative for both the business and also the council. So that will be correct, in having anyone from the business side that is interested to collaborate with the Town Council, so that we can put forth a name of that person. So I guess, in conclusion...
But that wasn't true in the past. That's why Meredith Miller, she wasn't selected by the ATC. She was, the Collaborate Pasadena reached out to the business community for a representative from the business community, then they reached out to ATC representative from the ATC. And so Damon Hubdi was a representative from ATC, and the person they reached to in the business community through the Chamber of Commerce was Meredith Miller.
Okay. So what you recommended is that that come through the chamber, or anybody else?
To find a business person, yeah.
Okay, for a business. Okay. All right. So again, you have the opportunity to serve your community, volunteering for your community. So someone from the business, one of the local businesses, we are asking you, if you're here in us, to please consider volunteering to serve on Collaborate Pasadena. Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Sanika. All right, moving on to the LA County Department of Parks and Rec, and that will be Mr. Estrada.
Good evening, everybody. The month of March in Altadena Parks, we had one new program that we added, and I had mentioned that at the last meeting that we were doing, our Park, Spring Parks After Dark program. And that was kind of a trial run that our department did, agency-wide, and actually county-wide. And the event was pretty successful. It was based off of the spring camps for the alternate area. So the park did it only for three days, as opposed to our summer, where we do it for eight weeks. Our department now is moving forward and doing these, the seasonal ones. So our next one is obviously coming up, will be the summer, Parks After Dark. And then we will have a winter, and then again, next year, in 2020, we will have another spring. So funding is great for us with that, and we get a lot of staff, a lot of activities, and a lot of programs for the community. We do have our Easter events that are coming up. Farnsworth Park is having theirs this Friday at 7:30. It's a flashlight Easter egg hunt. So be sure to bring your Easter baskets and flashlights. It's going to be fun. Loma Alta will be having their Easter hunt on Saturday, April 20th at 1:00 PM. And they will be having face painting prizes, coloring contests, and arts and crafts. And also, we will be having a Charles White one on the same day, and that will be at 10:00 AM and go until 12:00. And they will also be having prizes and activities for the kids. And as you guys know, everything will be free for the community, so be sure to show up, so you can get your Easter eggs and bring a basket. We will be having our summer day camp registration starting on April 29th, and it's going to be at 11:00 o'clock for Loma Alta. And they will be having a parent orientation June 5th. I will be mentioning this again in the future Town Council meetings, but I just wanted to put it out there, because Loma Alta does fill up pretty fast. And there is online registration, so that will be accessible starting April 29th at 11:00 AM. And it's a STEM program that they will be doing at Loma Alta. So they will be having eight weeks of the STEM program, I'm sorry, six weeks of the STEM program. And it'll be focusing on different science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and art. But the focus within the parks and recreation is also environment, so that's why they added the E at the beginning for a STEM. So, but it's fun. I'm on the committee for the department. The kids have a great time, they learn, keeps them engaged, so it's a great program for the kids. Also, Charles White Park, we don't want to leave them out, they will also be having a summer camp, and their registration is also on April 29th. And their program will be $40 per week, and that does include a T-shirt for $10. I did forget to mention that Loma Alta's fee is $100 for the week. Some other activities that we will be having through Loma Alta for the year, we'll be having our teen program, which is every Thursday. We have our Soul Sisters line dancing. They are there Mondays and Thursdays and Saturdays. I'll be emailing this out to the Town Council, because they did have some new programs and flyers that Loma Alta just provided me. So they will be sending, I was sending those out. We have an urban ballroom dancing class on Tuesdays and Saturdays, and the Tuesdays are from 5:30 to 6:00 for the after-school kids, and then they have a 6:00 to 8:00 PM for the adults. And on Saturdays, it's from 12:00 to 2:00. Loma Alta is also doing a T-ball program for 3- to 5-year-olds. Registration is getting close to full, so if you are looking to register your child, stop by Loma Alta Park to register your child, and it is co-ed. We do have one last program that we just started with our, to an expansion of our teen program. It is our teen, it's called MyPad, and it's a focusing, it's a group of teens that we focus on in providing resources for the kids, field trips. focus on in providing resources for the kids, field trips, college experiences. And it's funding that we got from the County of Los Angeles to provide this for the kids across the LA County. We had our first meeting last Thursday with the teens, and it was a great time to interact with them, actually have a one-on-one, so that way we could find out what they want to get out of the teen program. So this will be an extension going all the way through our Parks After Dark and carry over into 2020. And again, that's also going all throughout LA County. So we'll have more information as we get the program rolling starting next month. And then the last thing is that we do have our, our construction is a work in progress at Farnsworth Park for the tennis courts. So the bid process should be complete by next week. And I will look to have an update on that at the next meeting. Any questions?
Any questions for the Parks and Rec for Mr. Estrada? Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, 4.4, Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Cauliflower.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me. I have a couple things to share with everybody. First off, first one is Billy alluded to, the chamber is having our power breakfast in the morning at the Altadena Town and Country Club, starts at 8:00 AM. Our guest and, and speaker tomorrow will be Joe Nacita, who is the Director for the Los Angeles County Department of Consumer and Business Affairs. And he's very eager, he's actually lives in the community, very eager to come out and talk to the community and talk about some of the business services that the county has available, resources that they have available that many of us, including myself, are not fully aware of. So I think it's going to be a terrific program. We have a few seats left. It starts, I think I said, 8:00, runs 8:00 to 9:30, or 8 to, yeah, 8:00 to 9:30. It is free for chamber members, non-members. There is a $10 fee, but does include a wonderful continental breakfast. And so there are, before I forget, there are flyers on the piano for this event and the others that I want to share with you this evening. Secondly, we have a mixer coming up on April 25, Thursday, the 25th of April, at Grocery Outlet. For those of you, and hopefully there's not many in the room that haven't been to Grocery Outlet yet and seen the wonderful store, we encourage you to come out and do some socializing and networking. This event's going to be co-hosted with Grocery Outlet and the Rotary Club of Altadena. That is also free to chamber members, and there is a $5 fee for non-members, includes hors d'oeuvres and beverages and what have you. And that's from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, if I didn't mention that. And then lastly, and this is just a community announcement, it's not a necessarily a chamber event, but I think a great, a great event for the community, again, being held at Grocery Outlet, and this will be a pancake breakfast on Saturday, May 11th, from 8:00 to 10:30. All the proceeds are going to benefit the Altadena Mountain Rescue Group. That's being underwritten 100% by the Rotary Club of Altadena and going to be put on with the Rotary Club as well as some volunteers from the Sheriff's Youth Explorer Program. That flyer also on the piano and back, and that's $5 per ticket. Tickets are available at the sheriff's station, Hoopla, Grocery Outlet, El Patron, or you can get in touch directly with Dan Page, has tickets as well. So that's my announcements for the evening. Anybody have any questions? I'm happy to do my best to answer them.
Anyone on the council?
Okay. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Moving on to general public comments, and I turn it over to the Vice Chairman, Councilmember Sardelen.
Okay.
Is this on? Yes. There we go. Hi. Good evening to the council members and to our audience, which is nice and big tonight. Just come for a real quick announcement that the Neighbors Building of Better Altadena Candidate Forum is scheduled for May 29th in advance of our June elections. It's a great opportunity for candidates, for council to come, present their priorities and their experience, and it's a great time for the community members to talk directly with candidates in their census tract. So we've, are so grateful for the support that we've had in the past from folks who are running, and we hope for a big turnout May 29th. It's a Wednesday night from 7:00 to 8:30. Yes. Thanks, Granny. Yes. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm just having trouble reading the last name.
Oh, Jasmine. What's the D?
Okay. Now, of course, yes.
It was just the cursive.
I recognize you.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Jasmine Jimenez, and I'm here on behalf of Day One. Tonight, I'd like to remind you that April is National Alcohol Awareness Month. While we all know drinking and driving has potentially heavy and deadly consequences, the National Highway Traffic Safety Association found that the United States still had an alcohol-impaired traffic fatality every 48 minutes in 2017. Thankfully, Highway Patrol and Altadena Sheriff's have done tremendous work to increase awareness and prevent DUIs in Altadena. And I also wanted to share that our team conducted an awareness campaign with alcohol retailers throughout Spa 3 for St. Patrick's Day to help increase awareness about preventing drug driving. So I'm going to pass these around because these were the ones that we actually distributed out. So we did table tents, and we actually did coasters. They were provided to all the restaurants and bars in Altadena, which I handed out personally, and they were free, so they didn't have to pay anything for them. And I handed out 40 table tents and 600 coasters to the bars and restaurants. And then the ones that participated were Rancho Bar, Altadena L and Winehouse, El Patron Mexican Food, and Motas Mexican Restaurant. Apart for that, I'm also a part of Project Sticker Shop, where we work with local liquor stores, and we place stickers on multi-pack beers and AlcoPops to remind adults that it is illegal for them to buy alcohol to minors. And as we prepare for Cinco de Mayo in summer, I would like to invite everyone to please have a discussion with friends and family on the dangers of not just alcohol-impaired driving, but illicit and prescription drug impaired driving as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catalina. I'm also with Day One, and I have just two announcements for you guys. One is that Day One, we want to invite everyone to participate in National Take Back Day, which is going to be April 27th. Day One is participating with law enforcement agencies across Spa 3, and the closest to Altadena would be Pasadena Police Department. So we'll have some of these available for you guys. We're just encouraging people to safely dispose of any expired or unused prescription medications just to keep our community safe. A lot of these unused medications do fall into the hands of youth if they're left at home or just sitting around or taking up space, and they're also bad for the environment if you flush or throw them in the trash. So I encourage you to participate in that. Also, I'm going to share with you guys a poster, and these will be available, we'll leave some available. You can take some if you want to put one up anywhere in the community. But Day One is also convening community organizations and groups for Earth Day in Pasadena this Saturday on April 20th. And we're going to hear more about the LA County Sustainability Plan later on, but it's going to be the public's opportunity to preview the plan and, more importantly, provide your feedback on it. So that'll be the morning portion of the Earth Day event, and then in the afternoon you can enjoy the festival. And we have over 30 vendors, community groups, organizations who are going to share some of the work that they're doing locally on environmental issues. Earth Day was first celebrated in 1970, so is a long tradition, but I would say that today, the challenges that we have for climate, water, transportation, which we'll learn more about later, so we all need to engage, so come out and participate in Earth Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and community members. My name is Ann Coleman. I'd like to remind you of Altadena Heritage's upcoming program this Thursday here at the Community Center, dealing with the urban heat island effect, our health, our trees. We have three terrific speakers. One is from the Department of Health of LA County. That's Elizabeth Rhodes, and she'll be talking about the effects that increasing heat can have on our health and how trees can counteract the heat and can actually save us. And the other two speakers will be Altidinas Jill Vig and Susana Dad, who will tell us how to protect our trees, how to defend our trees from assaults at the hands of Southern Cal Edison and, and sometimes the county contractors and, and the assaults of pests and diseases. So it should be a really good program this Thursday, 7:00 PM, right here. Please come. Thank you.
Hello, Altadena community and council members. It's good to see you. I am here to tell you about the Soul Forest Sacred Music Festival that we are putting on, not this weekend, but the weekend following Earth Day at the First United Methodist Church down across from Linden's Optometry in Pasadena. This is the first time we're putting on this kind of a festival. My husband was here, I think, last month, perhaps. Paul, he plays the sitar. I'm a violinist. I brought my violin thinking, well, maybe I'll play something for them, but I realized we're not allowed, and then I thought I'd actually say something. But I believe that music shifts us inside. It can heal us, it can move us, and it can create bridges where there were none before. This is our first festival. We have invited award-winning, Grammy-nominated, Grammy-winning artists from around the world. We have the Arohi Ensemble that plays raga and jazz on Friday night, the 26th. On the 27th, we have Fanafi Allah. They are a Sufi Kowali group, mostly a bunch of hippies from central California who have learned this music on a high level, who travel to Pakistan every year to learn this traditional music. They are wonderful. We have a group, Inovgonawa, they do Moroccan music. They are the Grammy-nominated group. They're playing the evening, the Gundachi Brothers playing Indian drupad meditative music. Grace Nono, Filipino, same as me, bringing ritual sacred music that she has learned from different tribes and holy people from the Philippines, authorized to bring very rare music to hear. And Star Kalahiki from Hawaii. So I encourage you to, to come. I guess that means my time is up. I'm going to pass out cards this way and that way. Thank you very much for your time.
Barbie Ashida.
Good evening, council and community. My name is Barbie Ashida. I have a kaleidoscope of things. I'm just going to run through them, and then you can handle them however you want. The first one pertains to the Sustainability Plan that the county is going to be presenting on, and my question would be, does the ATC have any plans to make comments on, on this plan as a body? Because the, the plan is open to comments until May 24th. Just putting that out there. And then also, would you consider as being part of the sustainability in Altadena, going plastic-free as part of the ATC meetings? I.e., not offering water bottles, but requesting that people bring their own in keeping with our Altadena farmer's market, which is going plastic-free. And then what do you use that $2,000 for that you collect in the can? And if you would like more money, maybe we could consider becoming a nonprofit and do even bigger things. And then kudos to Veronica Jones for her work with these three ladies here who live in the retirement community over by Bob Lucas Library. And they are experiencing like landlord slumming, and they have a burned-out apartment that has not been attended to in the last five years. And what is the county, what is their responsibility in this? Because they are not being, the, the place is being run down so that they can be turned into condos, and they're at affordable prices where these people can live, and if they get turned into condos, they will be on the streets. So this is a community issue, and I'm just thankful that Veronica's on this, but how can we come around them as a community? Thank you.
Thank you, Barbie.
Evening, council members. Evening, members of the community. My name is Joy Walters, and I host a group of residents who are looking into the leafblower problem. And we have done a lot of research, and what we have put together is a flyer with information, resources, some information that you would want to know so that you can draw an opinion about leaf blowers and some alternatives. So they are available at the back ta, well, it's not a table, is it? It's a piano. It's acting as a table. It's in the back corner. We go by Chacha, which is clean, healthier air for Altadena. So that's what it looks like. Please pick one up. And if you're interested in joining our group, we meet monthly. Our next meeting is April 28th, and I'm posting that on Altadena Beautiful and on the next store. I'm not sure what that's called. It's like a Facebook forum, neighborhoods. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about something that I'm sure is already on your radar. It was even already mentioned tonight. That's the Southern California Edison's Plans for Our Trees, and I've been a little slow getting going on this. I, I attended a Cona meeting where it was discussed, and I have my, my concerns, and my biggest concern is I'm not sure that we're really validating everything we're being told. I do know that there, there was recent legislation that allowed utility companies to go up to a certain threshold for high fire-threat districts. It is unclear which part of Altadena and which parts are in the high-fire-threat district areas, high-fire-risk areas. And I think the first thing that, and I might already be beating a bush that you guys have already had some action on, but it would be great to know if you guys are looking into this a little further. I also started to do some research, and I'm really doubting their, their assertion that they are completely exempt from CEQA under all circumstances, CEQA California Environmental Quality Act. I do believe that there are certain circumstances where they are overburdening their easements and they're overreaching on their entitlements. So I would like to not only just suggest that perhaps a little bit more research be done on this if it's not already enacted, but I, I will offer, and Dorothy knows how to get ahold of me, I, I do a lot of CEQA research for a lot of other stuff, so I will offer my services to help do some of the research for you on the legislative side and the CEQA side. But I would like to see that it be something that we're focused on because the, the trees that they're going to destroy in Altadena, I mean, it, it goes to the whole health issue that we will have a lot less shade canopy and a lot poorer quality air if we don't, if we don't try to combat this. We're just accepting their word and letting them do what they want to do. And just, and that's my final note, and just to let you know, and overburdening their easements, they tore down a fence of mine to get to a pole in the backyard and never even told me. So that's the extreme that they're willing to go to. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Sardelen. And item number 6.1, that would be special presentations, IRIM Construction on Lincoln, and that'll be Mr. Kerry Jenkins.
It's nice to be here and see you again. My name's Kerry Jenkins, and I am the manager of Economic Development for the Community Development Commission of the County of Los Angeles. I am here tonight to present to you a project that is about to commence on Lincoln. I am here, not in my capacity necessarily as economic development manager, but I am here representing our county's chief executive office, Real Estate Division, who actually owns the property. We are working jointly with the Real Estate Division to develop that site and a number of other sites along Lincoln. So they told me, come on down and talk to you about the project. I do have some handouts, if I could give that to the members, and I'd like to, just for the record, read and describe what is about to occur. So let me hand this out, and then. So on one page, on the first page, you have a description of the activity that's about to occur, and on the second page or on the other side of the page is a map that shows where that site is. And we're looking at the Crosby and Lincoln vacant lot, if you have the map. Very briefly, this pipeline valve automation project will support the SoCal Gas's operational strategy governing emergency management and the CPUC California Public Utilities Commission mandated pipeline safety enhancement plan. A new valve with actuator will be installed in the existing pipeline on Crosby Street to provide automatic and/or remote valve closure to support rapid pipeline isolation and depressurization in the event of a major gas pipeline emergency. Going further down, and there's supporting information relative to the site and the project, the duration of this project should be approximately four months, and you will see on that site various trucks, materials for the construction, various fencing, welding material, et cetera, and it should be a situation, again, that should only last for a few months during the summertime. Our intent, and again, I'm not speaking for SoCal Gas, but I'm going to assume the intent is to move as quickly as possible with this project, do the enhancement underground, get it done, and get their equipment out of the way so that we can move forward with our underlying project to redevelop the site. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Jones.
Have the neighbors been informed about this? Or the, I mean, there's a school, they, the crossing guard is right there at Crosby. There's a lot of traffic. So have they been told about this?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, I'm only speaking tonight on this project and letting the town council know. I'm not aware of any information that's been given to the nearby school.
The resident, no, the residents.
Or the residents, for that matter.
In the area.
I'm going to make the assumption that this presentation I'm giving gives notice to the residents via the town council.
It would be my area, and it's, there's 1,700 homes.
Okay.
So it's up to, it's up to the gas company and the county to send out notices.
I'll make a note of that and let the real estate office know.
Is there a date on here?
Yeah.
The start date, as I understand it, should be by the end of this month.
Wow, geez.
Yeah.
You going to get back there, or is there notifying?
I can relay that information.
Go ahead.
Is there a reason why SoCal Gas isn't here tonight? To explain this?
No, I do not know. I was asked on behalf of our real estate office to give the presentation, and I think the reason being is that we have an underlying project at that site, and they're using it as an interim staging area.
Councilmember Marcusson.
I guess my message to SoCal Gas would be, ho, hold it up. I think that we would ordinarily talk to the supervisor's office, maybe, about, you know, are they aware? You know, were they notified? What can we do to? I mean, it does not look like it's a small little project, right? And it's how many trucks? It's four?
Six.
Six trucks.
Six plus eight.
At any given time, as I understand it.
Nine, 10.
This is parking, is that right? This part is parking, or it's trucks going?
Trips to.
Oh, two and from the lay-down yard, okay.
Six plus welding plus delivery.
Portable toilets where? Yeah.
On-site, on-site. The material staging, the portable toilet.
Within code, far enough away from the street, blah, blah, blah.
Correct. As far as I understand, and again, I cannot state this on behalf of the gas company, but...
Yeah, you can tell your buddy at the gas company that he sent you into the lion's den and probably knew it when he called you up, right? Yeah, probably knew it. So it's not my census tract, but if you need help.
And I'll be more than happy to relay any information. If there's concerns, which I think there seems to be, I can certainly relay that back to our real estate office and the supervisor's office.
Who's the person at SoCal Gas?
You know what? I don't even know. I'm not involved with that relationship.
We have a contact person at SoCal Gas. Who is that?
David Ford.
No, that's Edison. That's Edison. But we...
Maybe she helped grocery out.
Yeah, right.
She's the hiree that works with the supervisor's office, so I will get that to you.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Sorry, well, the guy in the real estate office just is not really the guy. So we're going to talk to, we're going to talk to SoCal Gas and the supervisor's office.
Is there anything you would like me to relay?
Gas? Yeah.
Is that we really need to have the residents notified about this and the businesses in the area? It's a very congested area on any normal day without anything extra there.
And it's not just your area, too, because if it affects the rest of Altadena, then we need to notify a lot of people. Not just that area.
Yeah, it's the right thing to do.
It is.
Because what will happen is you'll start the project, and then we'll have 50 residents in here complaining, and everything will have to stop.
And calling supervisor from the county.
Yeah, so it's better to do it upfront.
Yeah.
When I get back to the office in the morning, I'll relay the information.
Okay. Ellen Granny's pissed, for sure.
She lives in that census tract.
That's right, yeah. That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm going to go home now.
I'm going home now.
Mr. Jenkins, a few years back, when they did a smaller version of that project, I remember personally walking on Crosby, that corner, to make sure that the businesses were aware, and at that time, they were using only one property for staging purposes. They did let us know that there may be follow-up, you know, work that will be done on Lincoln, but I guess someone cannot drop the ball by not letting us know that there will be a continuation. And the one that took place a few years back, again, it was, they gave us specifically the area that that valve was, so it worked a little bit smoother. This is a much bigger project, so we want our community to be notified so that hopefully it will be a smoother process. Councilmember Malone, you want to say something?
Yeah, just as an example, and it's the residents around both residential and the economic and business areas, because recently, a couple of years ago, there was an instance on Lake Avenue where Edison decided to dig up the street and had like a two, three, four month project similar to this, but they gave no notice or no indication, and all the businesses in that area were impacted, and nobody could actually get to the businesses. And so it was an economical situation. Edison has since said that they will no longer do that and will give us a heads-up, assuming they will. This sounds like something similar. So before we get into that situation, I mean, what, if you are going to impact the businesses in that area, what have you done to navigate the situation for those businesses during the period, you know, as well as all the neighbors?
We'll take it offline. We got it.
Any more? Questions from council?
It seems like we've seen this picture before. It's a different project.
Well, it's been sold. No, it's not. That's a county project, and this is a SoCal Gas project.
I provided that map as a reference point. That is part of a redevelopment project, or what I would say, a development project of those vacant lots. And that was the nexus between my shop and the project that's before you tonight.
Lots, so, okay.
Okay. There was also, yeah, there was also issue on whatever the staging area, making it friendly to where it's not, it's closed, you know. A lot of work still needs to be done on this because we are not clear as to what they want to do. So if you want to talk to me at some point, that'll be okay. I know that Councilmember Marcusson can also help in terms of working around with the county.
I'll be more than happy to talk with either of you tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number 6.2, that'll be Altadena Farmers Market. And Councilmember Wong.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stacy Whitney.
We have a power box.
Okay.
No, there's the thing, the screen.
Everything's cool now. I'm not tearing up anything. Happy thoughts. Throw the tomatoes, I'll sell them. Lights, please. Four lights, please. Okay, apologize for the technical difficulties. Dorothy's going to help get that set up. But in the meantime, I'll ramble for a little bit about myself, and then on to the more important things. So my name is Stacy Whitney. I am the current manager of the Altadena Farmers Market. Little history, oh, good evening, council. Thank you for inviting me, first of all. I appreciate being here. So I grew up in Altadena at Fair Oaks and McNally, way, way, way up on Fair Oaks, just a couple blocks from the dirt and up to Zorthian Ranch. So I grew up in Altadena. I went to Audubon, and then somehow to Loma Alta, and then somehow to Washington, and then to Elliott, and then to Muir. Yes, John Muir, Mustangs. Thank you very much, yes. Bloom Gold, Bloom Gold. And then thought I wanted to see the country relocated to Chicago, went to culinary school, and got a bachelor's in culinary management, moved to Atlanta. I don't know why, came back home. And am currently also a master gardener, spent lots of years in retails. With all this cooking and gardening and retail experience, I really felt that this was a position that I was made for, in a way. And of course, being home makes it that much more special. So fortunately, I'm back, and trying to buy time, wow. I have lots of pretty pictures to show you. So, so as I was going to say, I'm manager of Altadena Farmers Market. We are open on Wednesdays, Wednesday evenings, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM currently, and in the fall, our hours are from 3:00 to 7:00, just because the change in time, daylight and what have you. We have approximately currently 40 vendors, and those are produce vendors, arts and crafts, artisans. We are partnering with the Altadena Village Makers to bring them back to the market also. Of course, very local vendors. We have several food vendors as well. And our goal is to make it not just a market, but a center for community wellness. So I envision it as being, and working on, I'm working on creating a space that is really inviting for all members of our community where we can do yoga. We have yoga on Wednesdays again now. We have music. We've got, we've got the little free library and the actual Altadena library coming out. We have games. We have a beautiful space just being at Loma Alta Park. So children are free to run around, people bring out their picnic blankets, and it's just a really wonderful community meeting place every Wednesday. So I invite you to come out if you haven't. We're also starting food demos this week, so that's another exciting thing. If you looked at a Romanesco and wondered, what the heck do I do with this? Now you can find out, because we're going to have Chef Matt, sometimes I'll be doing demos as well, focusing on healthy, sustainable ways to prepare food with the items that we have at the market. So those are the things that we have going on, and...
What do you do to get a space at the market?
Well, currently, the market is full, which is a good thing. Oh. Oh, I think, uh-oh. Okay, if you go up to Present, no, go back down, up there to the right where it says Present, top, very top. There you go, Present. There we go. There we go, awesome. Cisa puede. Okay, so as I said, I'm Stacy. I'm the current manager of the Altadena Farmers Market, and now I... It's just, okay. All right. Yeah, let's just collaborate here. Okay, so history of the market, started as an underground exchange of goods and services, so where people would come barter things, barter food and crafts and such, then transformed into a legitimate farmers' market, changed hands of ownership a few times. We are currently sponsored by the Altadena Community Garden, and they've been very supportive in our efforts to grow the garden and make it more of a community space. As I mentioned, we're open from Wednesday, on Wednesdays from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, spring and summer, and 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, fall and winter. And we're located at the beautiful Loma Alta Park. We're also partnering with Loma Alta Park on bringing more activities for children to the, to the market on Wednesdays. So it's great working with Penny there. for children to the, to the market on Wednesdays. So it's great working with Penny there. She's a fantastic resource for the community. All right, next, please. So as I said, my mission is to serve, for the market to serve as a center of wellness for the Altadena-Pastodina community. Next, please. And of course, at the market, we provide an assortment of fresh produce. We have some produce vendors who can actually walk to the market with their produce from their urban homesteads. We also have Klaus's Bees, which is a wonderful honey producer who get their bees, who have, who have been farming, growing, harvesting honey from bees in Angeles Crest Forest and bring it down from the mountains for our Altadena community. Next, please. As I mentioned, we're also very focused on health and fitness and bringing body care that's all natural to the market. In addition to honey, Klaus's Bees also make soap. And we're also bringing community yoga. I don't know if anyone's been to Hieroglyphics Yoga, also Mustang. I went to school with Stacy Mitchell and she does yoga at the market every Wednesday from 5:30 to 6:30. All right, next. Music and culture. Another thing that brings people together, of course, is music. So we have local artists who come out and perform. We also have a DJ who comes out twice a month. We also work to incorporate diversity in our food assortment. So we've got everything from papusas to musibis to tacos to vegan comfort slash soul food, which is awesome. Again, if you haven't, you've got to come out and try it. And we also have our local artists. And Rafaela Gask, who is the artist featured in the bottom right, will actually be doing arts and crafts lessons with children every week going forward. And she's doing them for free. Of community. So what makes the market, to me, is our sense of community and just communicating that in everything we do. As I said, our vendors are local. They've invested in the community by coming to the market, even when the market was slow. We've got our master gardeners who are participating in our market now. We have other nonprofits. Last week, Tierra del Sol came out with goats to show the children and to educate them on how goats are raised. And we are working very passionately in incorporating more demos and things that will attract EBT customers so that they know that this is a place for them as well. If you're not aware, we do offer a market match, which means that if someone comes with their EBT card and spends $5, they can actually get an additional $5 matched, up to $10. So you can spend $10 in EBT and get a $10 market match, which is wonderful. Yes. All right, next. Next, sustainability. As we mentioned earlier, a big, one of our biggest pushes right now is to make the market zero waste. And that's going to be a very aggressive goal. We're starting with making sure that we're not using single-use plastics, single-use plastic bags at the market. We were able to get some donations on behalf, thanks to the Altadena Community Garden, as well as some other local businesses who gave us bags. Altapasta Green Circle has been making bags. I've been making bags. And we're working to make sure that every customer who comes to the market is using a reusable bag or using a bag that can be repurposed. So if they come in with the plastic Super King bags, that's fine. But as long as we're not using those single-use bags, they're going to wind up in a landfill or in the ocean. And Altapasta Green Circle has been there every week recently, working with us to promote this and helping encourage, to bring their own, for everyone to bring their own everything. So in addition to bags, bringing your own utensils, your own cups, straws, whatever, just so that we're not putting more waste out into the oceans or our landfills. And next, we need volunteers also. So if you love coming to the farmers market anyway and if you want free produce and if you want a meal, then please come spend a couple hours with us. We're offering to feed you and to give you a beautiful bag, reusable bag of produce for coming out to help. Basically, just setting up at the market, helping with our demos, helping with arts and crafts. Anytime between 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM. So you'll be working from 3:00 to 5:00, 5:00 to 7:00, 6:00 to 8:00, two-hour shifts. And these are just some slides of other vendors and collaborators at the market. Does anyone have any questions for us? So we actually have abilities parking right at the entrance of the market. There are, I think, four spaces that are sectioned off specifically for access. The entrance is a driveway, so there's automatically a ramp there. And everything is accessible from that space. It's a, it is a parking lot, so, yeah. You still have to have your certificate. So they get their agricultural certificate.
Okay, councilmembers?
Any other questions?
Any questions from council? If you let me know, then
Yes, ma'am.
You said bags. You needed bags, reusable bags. The supervisor's office has bags. They'll give you a box of 50 if you call them and pick them up.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
I was just there today. I would be happy to go down and get some for you.
Call and ask them. Thank you.
I have a question.
Anything else?
Yes. I thought I heard you say that your booths are full. So do you have like a waiting list for vendors that are interested? I had someone reach out to me that I met at a women's conference who does handcrafted jewelry and is, and she sells up at the couple of different farmer, farmers markets. So is there like a waitlist or what's the process?
I do currently, currently have a waitlist. There are also times where some of our vendors may not be available. So when that happens, we do call those people who are on the waitlist to come in. As long as they have their permits ahead of time, you know, just making sure that they're prepared to jump in. I let them know that I'll give them about two weeks' notice if they do want to come in and then in place of a vendor who can't be there.
Okay. So have them contact you as first step?
Yes. And my email address is stacy@altadinafarmersmarket.com. Kind of long. Stacy, S-T-A-C-E-Y, at altadinafarmersmarket.com.
Any more questions from council? Ms. Whitney, what do you have in place to make sure that the produce farmers are actually compliant to it being organic and that they are of good quality? Is there anything that you guys are doing?
So one thing that I've been doing is actually visiting the farms. So visit, actually visiting, for instance, King and King Ranch, which is up near Ojai, actually in Fillmore, visiting them to inspect their facilities, to inspect the cleanliness of their facilities, how they handle their produce, ensuring that they are, if they are claiming to be organic, that they're not using pesticides or chemical fertilizers.
Okay. All right. I don't see any other hand from council. Thank you for taking the time to come to educate us. And I will see you on, is it on Wednesday?
It's tomorrow. Yes.
I will see you tomorrow. Oh, okay. Councilmember Malone?
One quick question. You were mentioning the great program about sharing dollars?
The market match, yes.
Market match. I heard that that might possibly be coming to an end. Is there any update on that?
So it's not coming to an end. What's happening beginning July 1st.
Such a good program. I'd hate to see that.
It's wonderful. It's amazing. So basically, Hunger Action LA has lost some funding. They actually lost it a while ago. So they've been kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul to make sure that they're contributing to this program still. It's changing. It's not going away. So for SSI customers, SSI people on social security who have been able to come in and just show that they show proof that they're on social security, those benefits will be going away. However, with the new CalFresh slash EBT qualifications, most of those people do qualify now for EBT. So there's going to be a big push over the next two months to get as many SSI customers or as many SSI qualified residents to, to apply for EBT so that they can still continue to get those benefits.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Wong, ma'am. Councilmember Wong, for us. Then we'll get you.
Hello. Yes. So I did want to thank, if you guys haven't been to the Altadena Farmers Market, I know Erin has and she's probably seen a couple of you there. It's definitely a wonderful community environment. And even with the Altadena Safe Streets Committee, we were able to do some outreach. So thank you for all the great things you do.
Thank you.
Was that your question?
Yes. We're giving away, we're giving away reusables at the market even. So we make it easy.
Okay. Well, we, we thank you so much for your time. And like I said, I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Los Angeles County Sustainability Plan. Kristin Polling.
Good evening, Town Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Kristin Torres-Polling. I'm with the County Los Angeles Chief Sustainability Office. You might not have heard of us before. We are a relatively new part of the county. We've been around for just over two years and we're housed in the chief executive office. And so I'm here today to talk about the sustainability plan. Sustainability has been referenced several times today, so it's very exciting to be here with you all and to be, you all are the first town council to have a presentation about the first countywide sustainability council, sustainability plan. So it's a very sort of groundbreaking moment here. I'm very excited to do it here in Altadena. So the background of our office, what do we do? We provide comprehensive and coordinated policy support and guidance for the board of supervisors, county departments, unincorporated areas, and the region as a whole, which is why I am so excited about my role to thinking about and our office's role of working not just for the county, but for the whole, the whole region of Los Angeles, to make our communities more sustainable. So what's in the sustainability plan? The colors are looking a little funky here. But this plan is a regional and long-term plan. So we're thinking out to 2045, 2050 type of long, long-term thinking here. We want it to be a very ambitious plan and comprehensive. So we're thinking about sustainability. We're definitely thinking about waste and energy and sort of the usual things that you might expect in a sustainability plan, but also thinking about how those things intersect with housing and equity and resilience. So very comprehensive. It sets out a vision, but it does not go so far as doing sort of financial assessments or the details because it is such a first attempt at bringing all these issues together. We wanted to keep it at the vision-setting level. And it largely addresses areas that are within the county's sort of more direct control. So we do think a lot about the unincorporated areas. We think a lot about county operations. So that includes, you know, the sheriff who was here earlier today, sheriff departments is at the table, fire departments at the table, parks and rec, every single county department is at the table in the development of this plan. But we do think about areas where we might have some influence. So Metro, for example, all county supervisors sit on the Board of Metro, South Coast Air Quality Management District, speaking of healthy air, we do have influence there. So that's the type of sphere that we're thinking about in this plan. There's a lot of words on these next few slides. So the plan's organized around goals. So I want you mostly to look at the icons. We're talking about building healthy communities where residents can thrive in place. I heard a little bit about potential displacement issues in this community. So the plan does discuss thinking about how can we be more sustainable, but not sort of create communities that are too expensive, that people feel like they can no longer afford. Everything from thriving ecosystems and habitats to accessible parks. There are 12 of these goals. And I would say the most punchy is our fossil fuel-free LA County. So that's, that's our shortest and most clear, I think, goal. And we have other issues, including accountable and transparent governance. So it's really cross-cutting and very exciting. We are, so we have those high-level goals. And then we have these more specific statements that are our strategies on how to achieve those goals. And then we have some more detailed action statements. And I have, just have some examples here about, under that fossil fuel-free LA County, one strategy for achieving that would be a zero emissions transportation system. And some detailed actions that we, as the county, could take. Some examples are installing EV chargers at county facilities for the public employee and the public's use and employees and then streamlining permitting for zero emission vehicle infrastructure. If you have all those, hopefully, we have heavy-duty electric trucks, all kinds of zero emission type of new vehicles, we might, we're going to need different permitting processes, sort of the wonky stuff, but the, that's the kind of thing that the county can do to actualize that fossil-free, fossil fuel-free LA County. And then we have numeric targets, where we set out goals with the numbers by 2025, 2035, and 2045, 2050 time range. So some examples are carbon neutrality by 2050, and that would be county-wide and of course, would include unincorporated areas. But then we're very coordinated with other parts of the, of the county. So I know you all recently heard from Public Works about Vision Zero. So we are aligned with those kinds of existing actions by other parts of the county. And I understand that urban heat is a concern of this area. So we do have targets around making a broad swath of the county sort of cool and reflective surfaces. So those are just some examples of the numeric targets. So we have sort of these qualitative goals, sort of the big thinking language, but also backed up by some, some numbers. The main part of what I'm here to talk about today is Saturday, day one reference, the environmental fair and expo. I encourage you all to attend. We will have, it's a family-friendly event, so we encourage families to come. Translation services will be provided. You can also follow us on social media and tweet and about your thoughts on the plan. We also have an online public comment process that will be open through May 24. We are doing past, this, this region first, Supervisor Barger's region first, but we will be doing events across the county. So if you have friends, relatives in other parts of the county, we do have other events. And they, they should be pretty fun. Tree giveaways, children's activities, the library will be out there. So encourage you all to attend. And we have our project website, OurCountyLA, that has a blog and keeps our social media sort of collated there, where we encourage you to go and participate. This sort of outlines the next steps, but the main one is public comment should come through on May 24. So if the town council would like to submit comments, we'd be happy to accept those, as well as from individuals. We are meeting with tribal nations. We're meeting with cities. We're really trying to get the word out because this ambitious plan, we cannot do alone. It requires the entire region to, to realize. And again, that's our project website. And that is where, since we're a sustainability plan, we are not printing out this much paper that every single version of the plan would, would require. So it basically lives online. So we encourage you to take out your phone right now, look up OurCountyLA and bookmark it and provide us some comments. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Take your time. All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Simmons? Council, please.
So the, the whole electric vehicle thing is a, is a great deal. But unless the power generation behind it, behind those chargers is also clean, the system is less than 100% efficient, the net gains are negative. What's been done there?
Yes, so we do address
Councilmember Simmons, the mic, can you direct it? Because they're not able to record it.
Do you want me to summarize the question? So the question is, if we, we're not specifically saying we have to electrify everything. We're saying zero emissions because we don't necessarily know what the future will look like. But the, the main question was, if we are moving to electrification of our transportation, transportation system, do we have enough power and do we have clean power to power that? Otherwise, what's the point? So yes, we do have the county making a commitment within the sort of the short term to move to renewable energy. The Clean Power Alliance is going to be the main avenue for that. But it absolutely requires the partnership of other utilities where the county doesn't have control. have control. So this is again, one of those things where we all set out the vision, but it, we can't control it. But the state actions on moving towards a totally renewable system will be aligned. So again, this requires a lot of partners, but absolute, we're considering energy. That's absolutely one. I just didn't reference it because we have so many categories within the plan.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Do you have a card?
I have many cards. I can just sleeve a pile on the piano, which it sounds like is where all good things go. Oh, sure.
Councilmember Wong.
Oh, hello. So with this very amazing plan, of course, we're all very happy, many of us here in the room, to hear about the Sustainability Plan. When I went to the Metro Next Gen Bus survey, there was a really nice presentation for the general public to kind of really understand what's going on. So that input was kind of seemed anyway, a little easier to do. So what would the general public, the residents, how can they best give input?
So participating on Saturday, we sort of break down some of the big ideas into sort of a 30-minute conversation is essentially, so we'll have sort of a town hall format. So there'll be stations around different goal areas where people can give feedback on particular actions or strategies. So that's, that would be the main avenue. And then we're happy to have individual meetings or a more sit-down conversation that's longer than the time allotted here. So we'd be happy to meet with anybody who wants to talk more in detail.
Thank you. And then what happens after the draft plan gets...
Is done being addressed?
Right.
Yes. So the Board of Supervisors will review the, the plan and we, we hope we'll adopt the plan. So the, the timeline for that is after the comment period closes, we will revise the, the plan and take a final plan to the Board of Supervisors. We anticipate the end of July.
Okay, Councilmember Sanika.
I just wanted to say we need about six more of your business cards.
Oh, I, I got them.
You mentioned that the intent of the plan is to be not only sort of aspirational but actionable. What does implementation look like? And is there a role for this community, for the Town Council, for other groups in town here that are engaged in environmental work? How do we stay involved? I know we can comment until the 24th. How do we stay involved?
So one of the proposed actions in the plan is to sort of continue the conversation, right? Because this, we've, we've had about 600 individuals come through workshops already. We, we did about a year's worth of engagement before we wrote anything down. And it was very, like, I'm a, I'm a transportation planner by background and I went into the transportation workshop and I said, "I don't know these people," which is great, right? It's, it's bringing a lot of new voices to the table. So I would really encourage the Town Council and members of the public here to look at the governance section of the plan because we, we want to know if, if the town, expansion of Town Council processes is the right avenue because not every part of unincorporated has a Town Council. So I think you all would have the best perspective on what should the future of inclusive governance related to sustainability be. So I'd be really, really encouraged to, or I would encourage you all to really think deeply about that because that's a really unique expertise area that, that this community has. And then, so we have our newsletter that goes out and that is going to be the avenue with which we communicate out the, the next step. So we don't know exactly what form it will take because we want to hear from the community of how they want to be engaged. But we do commit to regularly convening stakeholders who are interested in, in the implementation because that's, that's sort of the most exciting part.
Go ahead. So for those stakeholders that do want to continue to, to be engaged, how would they get on your list?
On OurCountyLA.org, if you, there's a keep in contact with us page. Also on our, I think my, my card has our office website. So we do, the Sustainability Plan is the main function of our office, but we do have other functions. So you can also sign up by visiting LACounty.org, dot, LACounty.gov/sustainability. So if you're interested in seeing the other types of board motions that we work on. Thanks for the question.
Councilmember Sanika.
I think you gave us a card.
Of somebody else?
Yeah, someone else.
Well, I just got piles of cards here, so these appear to all be mine.
I think a few more. Yeah, well, I have one more.
I took a picture.
Culver City, not me. Apologies.
I have a question for you. I, I believe in Altadena with our uniqueness, the Town Council, presenting at the Town Council may not really give the community the opportunity to express and give you the proper feedback. Will you be open if we can work out something to where we can arrange a special presentation that will be more of a dialogue, town hall type situat, you know, setup?
Yeah, we'd be happy to.
That would be okay? Okay.
Yeah, and I, I would, that is really what Saturday is meant to be. Supervisor Barger was, was planning to attend as well, but she has a funeral to attend. But her office is also in this dialogue. So we'd be happy to have another one, but we, we strongly encourage the community to participate on Saturday. We would be happy to have a separate conversation.
All right. I will, would you like to work with her? You want me to work with her?
Sure.
Okay. So both of us will work with you to come up with something that the community can participate and be able to chime in. We really don't have enough time at the Town Council to be able to delve into the...
The details, yeah.
Because this is very important. We're talking about this long-term sustainability vision for, for LA County, for Altadena. We would like to delve into it a little bit deeper.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Committee reports, item number 7.1, line use. Councilmember Markerson.
Okay, the, the 4-2-2019 meeting was canceled, that was two weeks ago, because the committee had nothing to review, no items to review or vote on. We are, we may have something coming up, but right now it's a slow time in Altadena, so that's good. I did want to mention that May 8 is the Palm Presentation at the Regional Planning Commission. The project will be going in front of the Planning Commission on the 8th of May at 9:00 a.m. at 3200 West Temple Hall of Records, Room 150. That's where all of the supervisor meetings are held. I'm sorry, this is for regional planning. Sorry, sorry, sorry. This is for the Regional Planning Commission. And so if anybody wants to go, please make your comments before then, down to the committee, I'm down, I'm sorry, down to the Regional Planning Department. If you have any public comment that you want to make on that project, please make it down to the Regional Planning Department and the planner who's handling that. You should be getting, well, if this went out, if the, if the hearing is May 8, then the notices went out prior to April 8. So the neighbors, everybody around there should have, in a thousand feet, a thousand square feet, should have gotten, or a thousand-foot radius, I guess, should have gotten notices for the neighbors. So really important, everybody, that's when that meeting is. And if you have public comment for the project, you should do that. The other thing is the New York Drive project has sort of finished one phase of it. The north side of the street is now completed from a cement and curbs and the guardrails along the, along the road. That has all been completed for the north side of the street and they're now working on the south side of the street. This is between Altadena Drive and Allen. And once they finish the south side of the street, which what, it's taken them three months, but there was a lot of rain, once they finish the south side of the street, then they will dig up the street. That's the final, the final phase is dig up the street. So, you know, they're, they are doing mail, email blasts. I think everybody's getting those. So, and if you want to be on the email blast for the county, let me know and I'll get your name down to them. Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Sanika.
This is, this is a question of something else that you have presented in the past. I wanted to know if there was a resident that did not register their fences and hedges, what are the consequences?
I have not heard anything from the county about extending the date of April 1. They notified residents bunches of times, as did we, as did, you know, they sent out, they sent out emails, they sent out mailers, multiple mailers to your house. They had a number of meetings where they were here out in the lobby doing registration. They had a couple other meetings where they were actually here to talk to everybody about it and the, and the dates have been out there for a long time. So I guess if they want to contact the county directly and try to see what they'll do, but they have not talked to me at all about extending the date.
So is the code enforcer going to come and...
No. So there, there has never been, in the history of Altadena, there has never been proactive code, code enforcement, nor will there be. So, and proactive means that somebody's driving around trying to look for illegal or, or non-conforming fences and hedges. So what one runs the risk of by not having registered, if you do have a non-conforming fence, hedge, or wall in your front yard, is that at some point, for some reason, somebody might complain about it and then they're going to have to correct it. And if they had registered, they would have not had to correct it for 15 years. So the, the New York Drive people had a person this week, I was this week or last week, asked them about registering. When I went and looked at their house, they don't have a non-conforming fence, so I'm not really sure. So you ought to go see, they, they weren't non-conforming, so I didn't, I didn't really understand why they were asking that. And the county was going to get back to them on that. But, you know, they can either call, sooner the better in my mind. If you're going to try to ask for an, for, you know, an exception, do it again. Do it sooner than later. Or just hope nobody complains. Don't piss off your neighbors. You know? Okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Markerson? At this point, I would just like to, oh, Councilmember Malone.
This is not a question for, I just noticed there was no education committee report on here and for the committee reports. And I just want to mention that the music festival that they were announcing earlier in Pasadena is free to all PUSD students. And so I was going to bring that up during the report because it's not on here. I wanted to make sure we, everybody knows that.
Okay, thank you. In the interest of time, it is 9:06 and I'd like for us to try to wrap up as, as fast as possible. Okay? So I'll move on to the Safe Streets Mobility.
Thank you very much. So just some quick highlights. After that great presentation we just had from the county, we also submitted comments, thanks to Councilmember Jones. We pretty much, through the Safe Streets Committee and Town Council, submitted our comments from Vision Zero. So that was a good thing. And then April 26 through 29 is the City Nature Challenge. So we were looking at organizing a community walk. So if anybody wants to join, it's kind of last minute, but the challenge is via iNaturalist and it's going on countywide, identifying things that are actually alive, trees, birds, bugs, in Altadena. So I was looking at getting something going there. And then May is Bike Month and our, we have a, a Safe Streets meeting tomorrow. It's kind of a smaller meeting, 6 o'clock. Otherwise, stay tuned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wong. Any questions for Councilmember Wong? Okay. All right, Election Committee, Councilmember Lee.
Good evening again. April the 19th is the day that the campaign application packages will be uploaded to our website. We have a tab on the website that says election. You can find out all the information there. Dates that will be input there will be some of the future dates, but Election Day is June 8. And today's an exciting day because you each get to take home a present from the Election Committee. These are our new signs that get to be put up on Friday the 19th. They were made by Sylvia Vega.
Wow.
She had them made for us. So we'd like you to put them in a high-visibility area of your census tract. No, each census tract gets two, so each one gets one.
Burn up to the same corner.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Councilmember Lee?
What, what, what you've forgotten to mention, I'm sure. Yes. Not, not only will the application package be on the website for you to download, if you wanted to download it, they will, there will be physical packages available at that desk out in the hallway on Friday.
Okay, you have the opportunity to participate. You didn't say anything about volunteers. Do you have all your volunteers?
We, we need volunteers for Voting Day, so please contact me. My number is on the website as the election chair. And we will talk with you, write your name and number down, and we will have a place for you to help us. Thank you.
The, the volunteer? Is there a way we can get volunteer hours to high school students from PUSD for volunteering on Election Day? Can we do that in any way?
Are they residents?
Let's be over 18.
They tried that one.
Okay, just a thought.
We tried before and you have to be 18 to do that. Okay, Councilmember Robertson?
I was hoping our elections committee could remind the community of those two voting days and also the deadline for getting those candidate packets turned in.
May 10 is the day, May 10 is the deadline, 5:00 here, for turning them in. And the voting day is June 8. And June 4, Tuesday is the June 4. That's an early voting day that we have.
All of that information is on the website.
Okay, thank you so much. And it looks like we're moving on to the Census Tract Report, 4610.
Antonio.
Yeah, I just want to briefly thank everyone, you know, councilmembers, community partners, our volunteers as well, for attending our community town hall, which happened about a month ago. We had it at Union Station, brand-new local office here in Altadena, and they were very happy to host it. And a lot of our community partners came and spoke about some of the projects that they were working on. In hindsight, I would have wished SoCal Gas would have mentioned the project because that would have been a really good opportunity. And I think they missed out to inform us a month ago about this pipeline project. But overall, there's a lot of vendors and a lot of good community engagement. So we'll be working on the program as well to try to keep things more concise. And we'll be planning this again for the summer. So if you're available and interested, be on the lookout for that. be on the lookout for that.
All right. Any questions for Councilmember? None? Okay. Actually, my comment with respect to the Altadena Town Council Community Breakfast and Town Hall was that it was a major success. We have been, as a council, planning to have community engagement where more than just one census tract participated, more like a town council-wide event. And this was really a great thing that happened, and the way that it was organized was great. So I did speak with the executive committee. And prior to that event, Census Tract 4602, you and I, Councilmember Malone, had that exchange with one of the community members who had significant interest in organizing in a similar fashion. So I'm throwing out there to the entire council that it might be a good thing that we do something like this on a quarterly basis. And I shared this with the executive committee. We do know that the next one, Census Tract 4602, is exploring that to see how we might be able to do it, but it will be the entire council rather than just individual census tract. And issues that needs to be further developed concerns can be raised at that time, and ample time given to be able to properly digest it and community bring their input. So, and I heard what you said, so we, yeah, one is in the works sometime in June. We will put it together very quickly to make sure that it really is kicked off to where the communities also notify on time and for you to be well-prepared. Go ahead, Councilmember Malone.
You touched on the fact of the request for a town hall within 4602, which I've 100% been wanting to explore. However, one of the things that I've been waiting on, which we need to see, is after Election Day. Because I don't think, we may have council members that may not be on the council making plans now for after, or people that may be new to the council who want to then meet there. So I think that any representation or town hall that we do, whether it be by Census Tract or by the town council-wide, I think needs to be considered after the election so we know who the players are. And a chance for people to actually meet the new council members as well.
I welcome that. I think that that does the spirit that we, that I made that comment. We had one on the west side. We want to have one in the middle and kind of move things around, maybe one on the east side and, and maybe. So again, we will explore this a little bit better in the next week or so so that we can come up with something that, that can be, so that we can get the word out to the community. All right? Okay. 46...
You're done.
I'm not done. Just one more. 460301, Councilmember Wong.
Yes, hi. So thank you. I think it was, I don't know, a few months ago. It was a really amazing experience. We went and toured the Lincoln Avenue Water Company as a community. And so I encourage all council members to really get to know your water companies. I was up on Cheney Trail, and one of the workers, I learned that they actually store the water up in the hillside. So just for the residents of Lincoln Avenue Water, I'm going to actually go to my first ever annual stockholder meeting on May 6 at 6:00 p.m. And it was definitely an amazing community-building event. People got together, we all walked, we all learned. And since we've had so much rain, at this point anyway, you know, it was, they actually didn't use any of the Metropolitan Water District water lately. So, anyway, get to know your water district. It's really fun, exciting. That's it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Once again, the community, those that are here always, we appreciate you coming. And at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. And thank you so much. And thank you so much. So, all right, so the motion has been properly moved and seconded, so we are adjourning. The time is 9:18 p.m.